Okay, uh, welcome to Dale Bass for joining us today in this interactive session with journalism students at Thompson Rivers University. Uh, Dale Bass has a lot to say that is relevant to journalism students. Uh, seeking a career in journalism and trying to understand how they would cover a local municipality like Kamloops. Dale has been on both sides, first as a daily newspaper reporter and as a journalist um for Kamloops this week. Then as a a member of the Kamloops City Council as a politician. She served one four-year term and has been re-elected to city council. Um, I think we're hoping today to hear things from Dale about what was her path in um her career path in journalism? How can our students uh make themselves competitive for a competitive job market in journalism right now? What are the freelance opportunities uh for journalism students in Kamloops? How can they break into the local media, get published, get the clipping file? Um, what does Dale think are the essential things to learn? Learn as a journalist? How does it feel to change sides uh to go from a a journalist covering politics? To becoming a politician having to deal on the other side with politicians and with journalists? What you know, what what are the the political issues in Kamloops for us to watch? Um, uh, with a new mayor and some new members of council and some re-elected council? And finally, I think we're all curious. What will be the dynamic between Dale Bass and the new mayor? The new mayor is a a newcomer to politics. And he told the media that he'd like Dale Bass to apologize to him. With that said, um, Dale, it's between you and the journalism students.
Sure, okay, thanks. Um, jump in anytime. Uh, if you have a question, you can interrupt me because that's going to be your job when you graduate, if you go into this field. Quickly, um, kind of ironic what Nicole said because my first experience with being a reporter was in grade six. Uh, when we had our own, we we just created something we called the portable post and we wrote about things that happened at school. And I kind of fell in love with it then, and I just sort of followed it along. Um, and ended up uh getting a a full ride scholarship uh for journalism and a job. Which is why I spent twenty-five years at a daily in Ontario. Uh, and then I got tired of it and my husband got a job preaching journalism at True, so we moved out here. And I got a job at the paper there and uh then the day came when I thought I can't do this anymore because journalism has changed from what I'm used to. So I looked for something else and got elected. That's basically it for me. Uh, I started in Underwood Typewriters and there were in the newsroom of a hundred and eighty, there were seven women. All of the men were white and wore black suits and white shirts and black ties. It was that type type of era back then. So that's why I found it difficult when it all started turning into cliques. Uh, and I chose running for city council because it's the same, basically the same skill set. You just don't have daily dead up deadlines. In fact, there are no deadlines except six months from now. Um, so uh, let's move quickly into, uh, I'm going to do freelance opportunities in Kamloops first because there are none. Literally are none. You're going to have to push. You're going to have to bug. Tim Petrock, a true grad, by the way, at Cashnet, you're going to have to bug Chris Foles at KTW. You're going to have to find obscure little news. The rant is out there. They may get it, but there's just nothing anymore. We've gone from where we always hire students to um, we just don't uh at all. So so good luck and don't just look in Kamloops because every, there's all kinds of online opportunities that you can find. So you're gonna have to work on that. I and I wish I could tell you better, but I can't because that's just the reality. Um, skill set, just assume you don't know anything and you'll do fine. Um, I've been dealing with a reporter who um is not covering one of my beats and I asked him why and he says, well, I don't understand it. And I said, well, then you got, you can know what questions to ask because you don't understand it. Don't assume that you need to know things. Just, you know, there's no stupid question at all. Which is why you're gonna ask me stupid questions here because they're not stupid questions, right? Exactly. Um, so I'm rushing through what what Sean asked so we can actually get into discussing things. Um, the new mayor and I do not like each other. Uh, he has missed and he has decided to get upset about something that I said eighteen months ago that had nothing to do with them. Uh, and um, we'll have to work that through that. It's his problem, not mine, because he's learning the job and I know the job. Uh, I I am nice to him. I am polite to him. I am keep telling him it had nothing to do with your read. I was talking about Darpan Sharma and all those angry people, but he just does not like me. That's okay. Um, because when you go on to city council, not everyone likes you and that's fine with me too. So that deals with all of those things quickly. Um. I'm going to give you just a few more tips on skill sets. Uh, don't, don't write your notes. Do not be a secretary. Think, research, think. Yes, yes, I am so angry when I read stories and I know nobody's actually thought they just sat there. They wrote down their notes, they went back and they rewrote their notes into a story. That's not journalism. That's secretarial skills. So don't do that. Don't be afraid to ask a question. So ask questions. Your turn. Tanner.
Yes, so you talked about rude Dale. Um, so I guess first question, uh, do you still stand by the comment you made about the settlement and rally?
Oh, sure, because at the time that was that notice of motion, which did not have Reed's name on, by the way, was fueled by and the angry Facebook mob. Um, who wanted to to round up the homeless, take them out to a center in Raleigh where they, we cannot technically build. Tell them they have to stay there and if they don't accept treatment, they are going to jail. That is the definition of a concentration camp. Residential schools were a concentration camp. The um ghettos, the the Japanese internment camps were rest constant. As soon as you concentrate a group of people together for who are have a common descriptor like religion or gender or socio-economic status or lack thereof, and you tell them they have to get together and we're going to tell you how we're we're going to treat you. That's what it is. And this came in response to this notice of motion, which said that the homeless people would be directed into it. Not asked to go to it. So, yeah. Wasn't rude, it was frank. It also led to an interesting conversation, which we are now again having, which I hope. And I I think I felt miserable at this. I had hoped would bring out some empathy for people who darned as fortunate as we are and quit viewing them as them. So, yeah, I'm fine with it. And rude Dale is really just blunt Dale. It's like Deuter says, I shoot from the hip and I don't play games at all. And um, I don't care. I'm at an age now where I I say what I think and if you don't like it, okay, that's your right. You know, okay.
Good.
Yep. Yep.
Hi, Laura. Yeah, so earlier on you were saying that you saw very uh a lot of changes inside of journalism as it grew within your career. So what would you say were the significant changes that made you turn from a journalist into a politician?
Lack of time. The rush, the rush to get things done written, but not necessarily right. Uh, and that goes back to the whole shift that has hit journalism, um, where everything has to be online first. It used to drive me nuts that our online presence at Kamloops this week, oh, we scooped our newspaper. You know, there were other ways we could have done it that I liked, but nobody else liked because um, and that was part of the reason why I started to think I had to leave. You know, I thought we should use uh the news, do the online quickly and then use the newspaper for explanatory stuff. Kind of like the Las Vegas paper was doing years and years ago when it first went online. They were two separate entities, one backed up the other. So that was the biggest thing. Um, also, um, I found with due respect to all of you, many young journalists don't research. And aren't comfortable covering things that they aren't comfortable with. As well, and that was making nuts too because like I I could cover, I I mean, I've covered things that a lot of people wouldn't cover. Um, you know, so it just, it it was changing in a way that I was uncomfortable with. Also fueling it though was the fact that I had just recovered from cancer. And when that happens, it changes your life. So literally, I was sitting in a hot tub with my husband one day and I said, that's it, I'm done. I I have had this this near-death experience. I'm done. I can't do this anymore. I'm gonna find something else to do. And he said, well, you better because we still have a mortgage. So um, so that's what I did. So so what I'm saying here is don't, don't, don't forget to think. Something else, Laura?
Yes, I have a follow-up with that. Um, if you were beginning your journalism career right now as it is, what steps would you take?
I'd go to a small town. I'd go to a small town where you're going to meet everybody, you're going to know everything. It's going to be uncomfortable sometimes because you're going to know them and they're going to know you and you're going to write something they don't like. But you're going to learn on the ground, you have to do everything. Um, you know, the merit newspaper, for example, was a great one to send uh true grads to because there was just one. I think the what, what were there, Sean? Two reporters? Something like that and and they had to do everything. Uh, and they had to learn and they had to do, you know, and it's just kind of like shoving you into the into the ocean. Learn to swim now.
You really think going and working at a small newspaper in a place like B C even is really going to facilitate a future career though?
Uh, yeah, yeah, um, the uh former um city editor of the Vancouver province uh started at a small paper. Then he came to our paper, which was uh considered a small paper at the time because we were a free handout. And um, he worked his butt off. He did, he did some excellent journalism. He won some awards. And he applied and he got a job at the province. He became city editor. He recently left that job for a comms job uh with the Pacific Health Authority. So, yeah. Because it doesn't matter where you are, it matters what you do. And and a lot of newspapers love award-winning journalists, even if, so you know, like you should always, and if you do something good, enter it in every award you can possibly get. Um, because they like that. It looks good on your resume, but yeah, yeah, yeah. You you need to learn first. You also have to keep, stay aware uh of who's hiring when, which is another thing. In this case, he happened to have a friend at the paper who said, hey, we're hiring another reporter and he replied and he got it. And he showed his work. He was good. I'm mad at him for going over to the dark side. Yeah. No, he's, he was good. So you can do that.
Okay, fair.
Yeah, something else, Diego?
Oh. I I am actually interested in knowing how you feel like about the um, the relationship between our new mayor and our new council and whether or not you feel like it's going to get in the way of Kamloops' progression for the next few years?
I'm glad you asked that. Um, we have six newbies. It's apparent, most of them have no idea what the job involves at all. So it'll be a very steep learning curve uh for them, but they're they're good people. And they um, they want to do the work. I just hope they can do the work. Uh, I think it'll take a while for for them to figure it, the job out, but it it did for us when when I was elected, we had five new ones. Fortunately, we all knew each other as well uh and uh from, some of us had known each other for years and years. Uh, and we worked well together because we already had those friendships. I'm hoping these business people who were elected have those as well and naturally can come together to work, work toward um getting things done that have to be done. I I'm I'm skeptical about the mayor right now. I'm I'm pretty confident he has no idea what he's got himself into. Um, but I know our staff is working very hard with him to get him to understand that there's more to his job than arguing about this street situation. There's sewers and waters and fire and police and infrastructure and potholes. You know, uh, all those things, uh, parks, swimming pools. So, uh, yeah, that's, it it will be interesting. Um, it will be most challenging for the three of us who have been returned because we're used to getting things done. And we're going to have to sort of sit back and watch while they learn and help them learn so we can get to the point where we get things done. Um, but but that that's, that said, uh, from your perspective, it's a great time to be a journalist covering municipal politics. I I mean, the reporters out there are thrilled because it's going to be Looney Tunes for a while. With things, I'm if I was a reporter right now, I would love to know what I actually know now as city councillor because it's going to break very soon and it's going to get people really angry again and um, and we're going to have to deal with it. So, uh, yeah, and reporters will love it. It will be a great story. They will just love writing about it. They will be able to rip us apart. It'll be fun. Yeah.
Yeah, with such a low voting turnout, do you think that he is like only twenty-nine percent, I believe? Do you think he is representative of like Kamloops citizens? Because it's such a low voting turnout, do you think that he can actually represent the people?
You know, that would be a good question to ask a um, ask Mary even if you were interviewing him. That's a really good question, Eagle. Um, you know, I don't know. I I I, we never really get great voter turnout at a municipal level. Even though every day what we do touches you, you pour a glass of water, that's us, you know, you flush the toilet, that's us. Um, I was surprised because I thought there was more anger out there that would be expressed than there was. So I don't, really don't know, but it doesn't matter because he's the mayor. You know, if if he won by one vote, he's still the mayor. And we're still the council and we're the ones who are going to be who everybody comes to when they're with their issues and their problems and their complaints and all that other stuff. And I really can't, even though I want to, ask people when they call me up with a complaint, say, did you vote? You know, because from my perspective, it's really depressing that people don't care enough to do anything other than complain.
So, yeah, yeah, just following up on that. Do you think there's like a way to increase voting turnout in future elections? Do you have any ideas on that?
Well, Ontario just had a municipal election and they had online voting. I asked about it because that makes sense to me. Uh, and I asked about of our election officer and she said there are all these complications and stuff. And I think I took it from that that basically we're not talking about it right now. So, um, I have a friend who's the outgoing mayor of London, Ontario. So I was going to ask him how the online voting works and try to bring it up during this term to see if we can actually get to it. Because your generation in particular, you do things online, you know, um. And and that would just bring in all, there's a large segment of people who, young people in particular, who just don't want to get, go stand in a line to put an X in a circle. And we should make it as easy as possible. We tried this year by adding another polling station and adding another advanced polling station, but it didn't reach people. So that would be good. We also have to deal with the mail-in ballots because we had a lot of them come in after the deadline. Not enough to change the votes. But nevertheless, those are people who tried to vote and we did not, we're not able to validate their their intention because the mail system sucks. So we have to deal with that as well. And I don't know how we deal with that, but I know our um, our election officer is tasked with finding a better way to get us at least over thirty percent. You know? Which, uh, we've talked about other things. Nancy Bepple thinks we should do city council meetings uh at a high school. I said, maybe we should do one up at True one time so people can actually see. Uh, but they would have to be interesting meetings, not boring meetings, but nevertheless, people could see what we do. And maybe understand more how valuable it is and why they should care. We'll see. It's on my, it's on my to-do list.
Cool, good to know, good to know.
Yeah, yeah, I have a to-do list. I always have a to-do list. Anybody else? Because otherwise we're in big trouble because it's like one twenty-three.
Um, I want to ask you, why do you think that uh Mayor Hammer Jackson got elected in the first place? Given his um, lack of knowledge of the job?
Well, you need to look at the whole province to see what, it it's a trend. Um, it, many exceptional mayors were thrown out and replaced by um either angry old white men or angry people. Uh, and I think it's a combination of frustration from being in the pandemic. Uh, frustration from discovering that we have homeless people and we have poverty and it's on the street everywhere. Um, I blame a lot of it on Trump giving people permission to be angry and rude and and share gossip and misinformation and condemn facts. So it's, it's a, it's, it's like there's been this big revelation that society really is broken. You know? It really, it, you know, I was writing about homeless people back, oh, God, I mean, I know, I was covering homeless people back in the eighties and nineties. Um, when we moved here, I I did a six-part series on homelessness in Kamloops in two thousand and our publisher tried to kill it because there are no homeless people here. Now that, now, because he didn't see them, you know, but now we see them. And now our mental health system is so broken that most, many of them have mental health issues and aren't getting treated. And our healthcare system is broken. So they aren't getting treated there and our freaking police system is broken because they're not even being held accountable. So I think everybody was mad. And it happened everywhere. I mean, even the mayor in Vancouver was was thrown over by a guy who's never been a councillor and had never attended a council meeting. I have a really dear friend who um was an edit, uh, and electoral area uh representative on T N R D up in seventy miles, she lost to a guy who who was just angry. You know? Uh, the mayor, Merritt lost. She she says she lost because people think it's her fault that they flooded. Because they need to be angry at someone and she's the mayor. The um, electoral area guy from um Litten lost because it's his fault. Everything for uh was flooded. It's easy to blame people who were in, who are in charge rather than accept what's really actually happened. And that's why. So Reed, Reed tapped into um, a really strong anger, particularly amongst the business community. Uh, because they've been hit hard and they've never actually had to worry about vandalism like they have to now. And they voted. So we'll see where it goes from there. Yeah, Tanner?
Um, just going off what you said about homelessness being a large issue with public health and, you know, our healthcare system. Do you think it's the role of the municipal government to take on this type of responsibility?
That is such a good question. These kids are smart, Sean. That is, that is such a good question because it's not our, it's not our responsibility. And that was thrown at Kathy Stadia and I during um when, right after we presented our first notice of motion on dealing with homelessness issues and um it was, well, this is not our problem. This is a provincial problem. And stay in your lane. If I could, if I had a dollar for every time I heard that, uh, stay in your lane. This is not our problem. Well, yeah, it is our problem because we represent the people. So we have an obligation to advocate for this at least. We can't do anything. But I I look at um people mad about the shelters. That's not us. That's B C housing in the province, but we work, we have to work with them to make it happen. So, you know. So we have to wear it as well. Uh, the the thing with the nurses, that was a fascinating one because I had been dealing with your angry nurses for years before I was elected. And it got worse. And we got the same thing. Uh, Mike O'Reilly and I were brought it up during a closed meeting and we got the same thing. This is not our problem. This is a provincial problem and in one of my more blunt mo- moves, I kind of went, excuse me, mayor. The nurses are our people, the doctors are our people, the patients are our people, they are our family, they are our friends, they are our relatives, they are our neighbors. We can't just ignore this. So we then try to do it, but technically speaking, it's not our problem. We just make it our problem because we care about Kamloops.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that runs the risk of being, uh, hang on, just let me finish Nicole, then I'll get you. That runs the risk of the provincial government saying, we'll let them do it anyhow and I don't care. Because we can get things done. Oh, sorry about that, Nicole. Your turn.
Yeah, um, in like pushing the provincial government, like advocating to them, is there certain methods that have actually been successful or do they seem to listen to when you would like tell them about your problems and try to seek help?
Um. No, um, and it, I think it depends on the government because one of the the challenges we have is we do not have M L A's who are in government. They are in opposition. And because politics at Victoria's partisan, they aren't going to get much done up here. Uh, the mayor found, Mayor Christian found calling, for example, the the health ministry. He never got a reply. He he had, he didn't get a reply until he finally got Adrian Dick's cellphone number. And um, but then we didn't get anywhere with it because we're Kamloops and we have two liberal M L A's. And we couldn't even get him up for the um official groundbreaking of the new building. So it's, it's challenging that way. I have a friend, I I, in the last N D P government, I had two longtime friends who were cabinet ministers who all of a sudden, as cabinet ministers, can't talk to me anymore. Can't even, you know, I can, they will not return phone calls. I had this with um, this one as well. I I called a friend who was a minister at the time uh of mental health and addiction and never got a reply. Um, education minister I've known for years and years. I I asked her simply to return a phone call from the the head of the school board, never happened. So what I always say about this is it doesn't really matter who you elect, they become government. And and they are not going to reply if they don't want to.
You think maybe putting pressure on them with like maybe more media pressure might help with that?
No, no.
No?
No, um, you know, uh, one of the examples of that is um, when B C Housing bought the Fortune Motel on the North Shore, we weren't told. So the the news had it first because a press release went out and I got up that morning and so did Kathy and Sadie and the rest of us to like sixty-five emails going, what the heck, you know, what is this? We didn't know, I don't know what it was going on about, you know? Uh, that changed slightly in that B C Housing now, B C Housing had told staff it was happening, but told staff they couldn't tell us. So now B C Housing will tell us what they're doing, but we can't talk about it. We, it just gives us a heads up so that we're ready when people get mad at us. So it's, it's just, it's just really difficult to get the provincial government to remember that there are people who live outside the mainland. So, and every time Todd and Peter open their mouths, you know, it's just, oh, well, that's the opposition, which is not right, but that's politics. You know, we should all be working together. Yeah. We'll see. I tried getting the um, I A for a long time to um, we now have have a vice president of I H A who will meet with council and actually talk about things, but the C E O would not return the mayor's calls, would not return my calls, even though I was calling on behalf of the mayor, would not return um some of the senior staff's calls as well. You had a question, Eagle, and I cut you off?
Uh, yeah, I'm actually interested in knowing if you have any any input on um, you know, the relationship between the federal government and this end of the country and the provincial government and this part of the province? Do you think there's any sort of situation that could come about where there is stronger and more significant communication and interaction between our different levels of government?
Well, I wish there was. I really do. It, um, the municipal governments are a creation of the provincial government. We don't constitutionally exist. So we can be dumped anytime if the province wants to do that. They could come marching in and say, we don't want you anymore. And that's just a legal reality. Because of that, like we're like the child of them, um, they can endorse and and they do. So fundamentally, the only two legitimate constitutional levels of government are federal and provincial. And that permeates how they view municipal governments. We're kind of like that kid who's always complaining. And they get tired of listening to us complain. Uh, and and I don't know how you get around that reality other than um find, getting past the partisanship. And again, you talk about federal, uh, our federal M P is great guy, wonderful guy, but he's in opposition. It's his job to disagree with everything the federal government wants to do, just like it's Peter and Todd's job to disagree with everything the province wants to do. That does not bode well for the cities where the representatives politically are thorns in their sides. It's, it's a system thing. Most of our systems are breaking down and this is one that's breaking down as well because we should actually all be working together to make everything better. But politics gets in the way. And it's frustrating. It really is. It's extremely frustrating. Um, you know, I've, I've told people to call up Peter or Todd with their issues that I can't help with specifically or none of us can. And they do, but they don't get anywhere because because it's it's opposition. I know I'm repeating myself, but that's simply the reality. Maybe you guys could change it. When you're journalists, maybe you can like write stuff that pressures them all into realizing that we're in this together. You know, we're not in this to fight with each other. We're in this to find solutions. And if we actually work together, we might have found some of the solutions already. Yeah.
Uh, I was wondering, do you have um, a different view on politicians as a journalist than you do now with working with them?
Uh, I think they have a different view of me actually more than I have of them. Um, I'll get to that in a minute. Um. Well, you know, being on on their side, uh, I see the work that they do that I didn't see as a journalist. Um, it was my job at the paper to be the crit, uh, the critic of city head council. More than the, you know, because I I don't write on my own beats in columns because that's not what the way you should do it. And so um, quite often that I would only look at the negative of it, not because it was, it was opinion as well. Um, but yeah, there's a lot, you know, there's some really anecdote. Um, Director of Community Services, uh, Byron McCormick hated when I called, absolutely hated me when I called or emailed for questions uh for information. We could not stand working with each other. My good best friend now at work. We have to work together. He understands me. I understand him. We get a lot of work done. I joke with them about the fact that he hated me and he jokes with the fact that I had a reason to hate me, you know? Um, but uh, they do so much that even you guys as reporters will never find out about. That's really good stuff. And they also screw up constantly, like the most recent thing was Memorial Arena and the stupid Beer Garden. That was a complete screw up. But they, they owned it and they fixed it. You know, so, but I will tell you on the other side, um, second year of council, my Christmas card from the C A O had a note in it saying, Dale, we were all scared when you were elected. My Christmas card from the C A O ca- had a note in it saying, Dale, we were all scared when you were elected. We thought all you would do is complain about us, but you're actually a really good team player. Thanks for being you. Okay, you know? There's me and there's the job me and they learned that too. So we worked up, but I will tell you the other thing that drives me crazy is um I'm used to deadlines. And I don't, I'm not used to deadlines that are, oh, let's study this, we'll come back in a year. Yeah, because in a year, everything's going to have changed and whatever you're telling me is no longer relevant because the world has changed. So, yeah. That's basically it.
Okay, thank you. Um do you think like? Part of, part of when, when I've interviewed politicians too, the answers are to questions are very general and. They try to lean it into a specific direction that they know a lot about. Uh in talking to you, it seems like you're a lot more transparent and I'm wondering if that's because you had to interview politicians before and noticed that at all? Tried to work.
That's, that's an interesting observation. Uh it could be. Uh I think it's more just a factor that I'm just me. So I am. Um it, and uh it has been an issue on occasion, but um I, I don't. During one of the forums, I was so mad at myself going home, I didn't answer a question. I turned it around to something that I wanted to say because I didn't want to answer the question and it bothered me going home because so I kind of vented at my husband saying, what did I do that for? He says, oh, you're turning into a politician, you know? Um but that's not fair to anybody because if I don't tell you, if a politician doesn't tell you what's really going on. Then you don't know what else to ask. And if you're one of those reporters who just writes your notes, your readers aren't going to know what's going on either. So I try to be as uh upfront and honest as I can. Uh but quite often their confidentiality gets in the way. So I ha- do have to tap dance around some answers and I try to tap dance in a way that they know that I'm tap dancing. Because I can't talk about it. Like I did that last night with a woman who actually knows what's going to be released very soon. And I, I sort of said, sorry, I can't talk about it, you know, well, blah, 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 blah. I said, can't talk about it, um but you know, I'll take your concerns to staff. You know, and uh and so, and she knew what, she finally figured it out, you know, I can't talk about it. I wish I could some days, I really do. Yeah, there are some days I just want to scream out, ask this question. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Tanner.
Uh yeah, so um being that I just moved to Kamloops recently. Um and issues of housing, of course, is. You know, been a thing. So I know that zoning is one of the things that the municipal government has a say in. Um I noticed as soon as I got here that there are apartments on T R U's campus. That don't appear to be designated student housing. And then when I looked into it, I found that the plan is to actually create more apartments on T R U's campus. That are not designated for student housing. Um. Do you have any thoughts on that or is that something that the council thought was going to help any issues or make? Or was that not considered?
That's a previous, and it's a stupid one. Um but I think that they were counting on adding, and I know they plan to add more. Student housing across the, across, you know, where they bought all the land.
Off of campus.
And I know they've got plans for it there. Um one thing um with respect to Sean, uh T R U is not in it, is, is a business. That happens to produce education. And as a business, it wants to make a profit in some way and the way they're doing that is through market housing. Which they can then reinvest into providing their product and their service, which is education. Um and that, so that's why they're doing that. Uh and. It, it will create an interesting campus. It's kind of like U B C, but um but it's not helping you guys and we saw that. You, maybe you weren't here when, when they had to go out and buy all the, the, the C cans basically to put international students in. Um they, I know they have a plan. They want to put three more buildings. I think it's coming through the process now. They want to build three more buildings over there on that McLeish area as well. Um but and I think they also have bought some land farther west that they are looking at too, but again. It takes time to get all this stuff done. First of all, getting all the pro- everything through the, the processes at City Hall, which can take up to a year. And then getting it all built. It takes forever. We need to change that system. Uh completely. And I, and I feel for you because my, my son is living in a. Four hundred fifty square foot studio apartment for thirteen hundred a month plus hydro. And works for minimum wage. Um you know, I don't know how, you know, I've, I've talked to students during the campaign who are living in hovels in basements, out in Brock. And they have to take the, you know, it's, it's just awful. And it's awful not just for students, it's awful for anybody who's your age, for seniors. You know, I mean, I, I kind of joked during one meeting that. Don't talk about not being able to afford rent. They, you know, they can't even afford the gas if they can afford a car. To park in their parking lot, but you know, it's just, it's silly. It's wrong and it's another thing, it's part of the system that's broken. So where are you living? Which area?
In Valley View, living with my mother.
Okay, I'm out in Dallas. That's fortunate because my son and fiance were living in a, in a creepy little basement, illegal suite and they were renovating. And they have a dog, so they couldn't find a place at all. So Liam moves back with, to home with us because we happen to be here, but we didn't live here. He had nowhere to go. His fiancee and the dog moved back to mom in Laura Nicola, but if she didn't live there, she had nowhere to go as well. So then right now we're adding two more homeless people to our problem. Just because of renovations and the fact that they were living in an illegal suite as well. So we have to address all of those problems and we're starting to do that. We rejected the staff's recommendation. Uh for Smeaton Hall, that thing that's being built on, on Trunk Hill that's rent geared to income. Uh they, it was supposed to have a certain number of parking spots and staff said, um it has to have this number and we disagreed. We said, well, people living there. Won't have a car. They're on a bus route. Half of them are going to work at Redbeard. They're just going to walk down the street, you know? That was a challenge because staff was not happy with us. You know, because we weren't following the rules, we weren't staying in our lane, but we have to do more of that now. And we really have to get true to get moving on, on student housing. Yeah, that's my long answer.
Yeah, no, that's good. Uh I do have one further question. Um this is more of just asking your opinion on something, but. Do you think it's appropriate for the dean at T R U to be on the board of? Making the decisions about the trust or the land of T R U?
Well, you know, that's something that um if I was a reporter, I'd look into because I don't know the answer to that. Um uh conflicts of interest are an interesting area. Um maybe he does have a conflict, maybe he doesn't. I don't know. I just know on council, uh we get to decide if we have a conflict. You know, uh there have been times when some of us thought one of our counselors should have declared a conflict and he said he didn't have to. And nobody challenged on it. So um I don't know. Um. But that would be an interesting story to at least look into. Now, see if you have, if, if, and this is a teachable moment. When you think something like that, do that story. And even if it doesn't become a story, you've learned something. As well. I mean, I, I did so many interviews on things that I never did stories on because I thought, oh, this is interesting. Let's look into it and it turned out to be nothing. But I met somebody and I learned something. So, yeah. What dean?
I don't know the name. I'll stop in my head.
Okay. Smart answer. Okay. Megan, you're quiet. You got anything? Nope. Okie dokie. No prob.
Um I'm actually, I have another question about the uh more the future of Kamloops and the progression. It involves the housing issue quite a bit. So there's obviously a lot of. Um a lot of spread in Kamloops. Citizens, you know, people are really spread out and you have the neighborhoods like Juniper Ridge, which is where I live. And then you have Dallas and Barnhart Vale and you have Pine View and you have Bachelor Heights and these are all places that have. Like probably ninety-nine percent. Single-family homes. They're zoned as entirely residential for single-family homes. There's. Very, very few exceptions for multifamily homes or apartments in these neighborhoods. Do you think there's any chance that the city of Kamloops and the municipal government and even maybe even the provincial government might? Start pushing more for introducing mixed zoning in these neighborhoods and sort of. Reforming them to foster a bit more independent growth and independent economy within, within each of them?
Um we did a complete zoning bylaw rewrite uh last year, allowing for. Some of the big lots like out in Dallas to be subdivided. Just no one's taking us up on that now and so that's, that's the biggest problem. Uh so there, there are interesting issues here that create interesting stories. First of all, you have NIMBYism. You know, nobody want, if, if we, everyone knows we have a housing problem, but nobody wants that three-story walk-up in their neighborhood. You know, just like everybody knows we need shelters, but don't put it near us. Um most, we've had so many. We've done a lot of infilling with, with multifamily downtown. And each time, all the neighbors are up in arms, don't want it, not going to fit, too much traffic, I pay taxes. Um you know, I don't know what that actually means, uh but we're going to have to do that. That's number one. Number two for the answer is the reality is Kamloops is growing. So we can't keep densifying downtown because we're going to run out of room. So for example, out here um just past Valley View, uh the Pine Ridge proposal that sees four hundred and fifty new houses. Going in where the golf course is, will probably come to council next year. People can say that's urban sprawl, but we need housing and this is where the, the builder wants to build it. And a lot of it will be multifamily and a lot of it will be single, but on smaller lots. Problem from that is where are those kids going to go to school? You know, there's always a problem with any decision that we make, but um in terms of urban sprawl, um. It, it has to happen as a city grows. So when I moved here twenty-three years ago, I, the population was seventy-five thousand roughly. Right now, we're just a little under a hundred thousand. That's a lot of growth in twenty-three years and ca- and our growth rate percentage-wise is higher than it should be. And we're going to continue to see people moving to us because they can't afford to live down on the coast anymore. So where are we going to put them? Third part of the answer is not everybody wants to live in a multifamily unit. I mean. I couldn't, I have five kids. If I, if they were still at home, I can't live in an apartment or a townhouse or, or a strata. I, I can't. Um. I, I, um so we have, we have two acres out here and, and we can't subdivide it because it's all up the hill. But it's, but not everybody wants to do that. Not everybody wants to live downtown. Some people like to live far away from the noise and the hustle and bustle as well. So we have to do what you're suggesting, which is look for solutions, but we have to remember that it's not one size fits all. And the reality is, everything's growing. You know, we're going to have to hire more police because our city is getting bigger. We're going to have to hire, hire more firefighters because our city is getting bigger. We're going to have to build more roads, more schools. We're going to have to build more houses too. So.
And what about the introduction of, you know, more commercial zoning into these primarily residential neighborhoods? Because there's only one business in Juniper Ridge and. It's overpriced and people often don't use it and it provides no jobs for anybody. Everybody that lives up here has to take the extra ten minutes to drive up and down the hill every day.
You're get, you're getting a new store up there, but I can't remember what it is. Um we just approved it. Well, you know, uh the community charter does not allow. City municipal governments to do that kind of work other than zoning. So we can't force people, businesses to go there. We can zone it for them and we're trying to do that with most of the new multifamily where. You know, commercial office uh down on the main floor and residential up top people, but we can't, you know. We were asked that, um I was asked that at Valley View during the forum. Why can't city council just go out and find a grocery store to come and come in there? Well, we can't do that because we can't do anything that benefits a specific business. We can just make it easier for that business to go there. So yeah, up in Juniper, it's been a long time since anything new has gone in that, that little corner there. And it's some sort of store. I just can't, can't remember what it is that's um going. To the west and it comes off the other street there, but it's all on, on, you know, I could get that if you want, but it's been a long time. And uh that, the other consideration is how many people will use it because you say hardly anybody uses the one that's there. That's not a good business decision, so they must know what they're doing. Yeah, I love it out here because all of a sudden we did ha- got housing and then we got a grocery store and a hair salon and a drugstore. You know, but they all had to make the decision to come out here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm pretty satisfied with the answer, honestly.
Are you got any questions, Sean? Or are you just staying out of this?
I'm uh, I'm trying to stay out of it. I want to let the students in and uh. And you talk, but I, I live in Juniper Ridge, so I'm intrigued by what's happening there and uh. Uh um one of the things I like about the Juniper Ridge store, it was just bought by Lesra Martin. Uh and as a former prison reporter who followed the story of the hurricane. And how this young boy Lesra Martin became part of a group um to um. To get him released from prison. Uh I'm delighted to see Lesra Martin, uh the owner of this store, but. No, I, I, I want to, I want the students to ask the questions.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't want you to think I was ignoring you. Lesra's a dear friend and I'm really glad he did this because he'll do, he'll invest up there now. Yeah, he's, he and Cheryl are sweethearts. That's an interesting story. You're right.
Was that very recently?
Um I think Lesher bought it about a year ago.
Okay, that would make sense.
Yeah, I can't remember.
I know the people who owned it before and uh. Weren't the best people to be running a business.
Oh, Lesher and Cheryl are great people. They really are. They're, they're super and um they, they will be committed to it. They're just really good people. Um yes, Laura.
Um going back to the uh. Uh wellness topic. Um in an interview with C F J C, you said that you were pushing for a treatment center here in Kamloops. And how, how's that coming along?
We're getting twenty beds. Um. I can't go into the specifics right now, but we are getting twenty beds. I'm hopeful. Watch me tap dance. I'm hopeful we'll see some of them announced very soon. Um I'm hopeful that they don't put it, them all in one location because I don't. Uh in my day, it was ghettoizing where you put everybody in one location and it just doesn't work. Um I'm hoping that they, they, they create some small family feeling centers. Um and I'm hoping I H A is able to staff them. That's the other issue is staff. Um and I'm hoping that we don't have to deal with a lot of NIMBYism. But, but we are going to get the twenty beds. It's just taking time to get them. Actually through the process. Uh I H A is, I ca- I think I can say I H A has identified two locations. Um but they're still thinking about a third location right now. Um and then we'll see from there. Uh and I just hope that they are open soon, quickly, quickly, really quickly. Yeah. I've also heard anecdotally again that they are going to expand the Car Forty program. They just don't know how. Uh and um. That will be good too because at one point, uh I had a foundation willing to pay for uh. A nurse's salary for one year as a pilot project and the city had committed to giving us a, a car and a policeman so we could have the second Car Forty. But I H A said we didn't need it. So now I think they're going to um, going back to the question from somebody else about can we pressure them? I think we have at council have complained about I H A so much that they have to do something for us. You know, and it's unfortunate we have to complain to get attention, but that's what, if it works, it works, right? It's kind of like a reporter. If you can't get somebody to talk to you, you just keep going after them until they give up. Yeah.
And before that'll be good. On with other topics and just going back to the. To the mayor, is there any issue that you wish that the new mayor places his attention upon, like particularly? A particular issue that you want to be addressed?
Housing. But it sort of ties in with what he campaigned on, uh which is um to deal with the uh the homeless situation. We have to deal with housing and we, but we have to deal with not just shelters and um not just these mobile modular things that we're putting um. For people. We've got, as we talked about just a while ago, we got to find housing for students. We got to find housing for young people. Uh my, my youngest has autism and his housing allowance is three hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. He can't live anywhere on that. His full uh pension, disability pension is like fourteen hundred. He can't live on that. We need to deal with that. There's a whole segment out there of. Disabled young adults who can't find anywhere to live. Uh seniors. Where are seniors supposed to go when they need to downsize, you know, and they're, and they're living on a pension? It, we get a lot of. Yeah.
Have you um seen the mayor's view on the housing crisis expand since he's been elected? Like in talking with council maybe? So he's still very focused on the homelessness and not the other.
Not married yet and we've only had one in, one. Group meeting yesterday for orientation. So I can only go by what he talked about during the election and he just talked about safety and security. And, and dealing with the homeless. So um he has been told uh housing is important. Um staff have gone over all of the burning issues with him.
Okay.
Um right now, you know, and, and, and he will have to deal with housing because that's a legacy issue from our council as well. We have things in the works now.
It's definitely something that council is going to put high priority on the whole spectrum of housing.
Yeah, right now I'm actually working with a developer and a builder and another um high-profile Kamloops person. On, on a, like, I, I like a white paper, I'll call it, uh that they're putting, that we're, they're putting and I'm looking at to um to address the housing issue. From all of the different aspects, from the homeless to the, to the, the um, the. From all of the different aspects, from the homeless to the to the the um the the missing middle. We don't have to worry as much about single-family housing, although it'd be nice to get the price down, but if we can increase the supply, then the price should come down. So, yeah, he's he's got no choice because I'm coming at him with it and so are some of the other counselors and it is one of the. The tentacles to to resolving homeless issue and the poverty issue.
Awesome, thank you.
So how, yeah, housing will be a a big one right away as far as. Although the really first issue we're gonna deal with is patios downtown.
Do you think there's any potential for council to? Uh do you think there's any potential for council to start encouraging businesses and to, you know. Foster more uh community involvement within their businesses, you know, have things like the farmer's market more often, have things like the um. I can't remember what it's called, but I just recently saw it. There's a big winter event where they're closing down the three hundred block in December. You know, have those opportunities more often where, you know, streets will be closed. People are encouraged to come down and. Experience what these businesses have to offer in a larger capacity just to. Maybe incentivize more business and more involvement.
We don't have direct involvement with something like that because that's not our purview. However, we do have council liaison people and staff liaison people on business associations, the chamber. They uh downtown business and the North Shore Business Association and they can bring bring those ideas forward or bring them. Hear them and bring them back to staff. When you talk about closing down roads, staff gets really, really weird. Because we can't shouldn't do that. Um and a partic- and there are some rules apparently that you can't shut down some roads on. That have bus routes or something like that. I don't know why you can't just detour them for a while like you would if they were doing roadwork on it, but anyhow. Uh so so there's that kind of overlap, but basically that's not our job. That's up to the business associations to promote themselves and we do what we can to make it happen. Yeah, as for community involvement, I think many of them think that they are involved. Community-wise and a lot of them are doing it through Rotary or through the Chamber of Commerce or just through stuff that they happen to do. So, uh you know, they they have their own ways of of giving back, so not all of them, but most of them do that. Yeah, and and that's a good thing, but that's not our and and we don't have the time to do that, to be honest. Really, you know. It's not, unless we have been talking to, we do give out awards to businesses who um we think do. Good community work, but even then, again, there are no criteria. I mean, uh uh we gave an award to a couple of businesses a couple of years ago and I couldn't figure out why because they had plates into the provincial government for violating the Playmate Standers Act. You know, but there are no criteria. We just say atta boy. Good job. That's something else I wanna change. Yeah.
Yeah, going back to the homelessness, the new mayor, he said um he had some ideas about. Shipping folks back to their home city if that's what they wanted to do. What did you think uh about like the feasibility and the ethics of that?
Ask Wellness does that already. Um the new mayor hates Ask, so that's why he wouldn't acknowledge this. Ask Wellness uh has a program where if somebody comes to is in Kamloops and they wanna say go back to uh Quinell. Uh Ask will make arrangements for that, but they will not send them back until they know that there's a plan in place in their hometown. That there's somewhere they can stay, that there are supports there for them so that they can continue to get better. Uh and so and and then they will pay to get them up there. Um they, I think last year. Bob told me that I think they did, they sent eight people who asked to go home, home. Uh so in that way, it's ethical and it's fair because they're asking for help. Now, putting them on a bus and shipping them home be- when they don't want to, what's that gonna accomplish? You're just gonna come right back here because we have really good services. You know, and and it's cruel. It's just cruel, you know. Um somebody posted today on Twitter. Uh that city council should just make it more uncomfortable for people who live on that home are homeless. Yeah, that's our job. Let's make people really uncomfortable. That's not ethical. That's not fair and that's not human. That's just not not right. So, um I like how Ask is doing it. Um they do work with some of them to get them to the point where they wanna go home, but it still becomes that person's decision. And they they make sure that person has every chance to succeed. Mustard Seed had three men go through their year-long program for recovery and they had graduated and they had jobs. But Mustard Seed wouldn't let them leave because they had no support, but they had no no place to live. So they kept them at the mission. Yeah, and that's the way we should do it. We have to, if we're gonna help people, make sure they're helped all the way through to success. Or relapse. We can't make everyone succeed, but we have to set the set the path there for them to go to. And we gotta be there behind them, pushing them a little bit. And if they push back, fine. We start again next time. But, yeah, Ask does that. I'm meeting Bob on Friday. I'm curious who says. Yep. Anybody else? So the issues you're gonna look at if you're covering city council will be. Is it is it chaotic or is this a council that's functioning? I think it will be. Uh are we addressing the issues that are concerned to you? And are we are you are we addressing the issues that you hear need addressing because it's not always about what you guys want? Um. Housing is an issue we need to look at. And in particular, whether we're actually re- dealing with housing with a twenty-twenty-three lens rather than a nineteen-fifty lens. I keep joking that some of the staff are still in the boxes they built around them in nineteen fifty and will not change. Parking is one of those issues. Um. Anything health is an issue. Absolutely anything health. I mean, it's just a shit show up there. I feel so bad for people. It is still not good. It's better. On health also, just an easy story to do is they have started work on the new uh ER. Which is now corporately branded by tech and it will extend for those of you who've been in a hospital. From the existing ER all the way out to the um elevators. That's a really big ER. How are they gonna staff it? Good que- that that would be a question to ask. Um going back to city council, um what else could we ask? We are changing up one of our committees, which will be interesting. It was community relations and administration. It's now going to be. Relations and reconc- reconciliation. That's a key thing. A lot of people criticized uh or or discussed a lack of understanding between city council and TT. Yes, but. Our relationship government to government is actually considered the model in Canada. Why? That's a good story. Uh because it there's some fascinating things that are going on there as well, government to government. Uh and there will be even more things with this new focus of that committee. Uh which nobody knows, by the way, so you guys can get started on now if you want. Um once there's a chair appointed. What other issues might there be with council? Uh. Well, the one that's near and near to my heart is the one I started with, which was daycare, which I was told wasn't a city issue. Um and I said, and I was told not to raise it, so I raised it. Uh and we eventually got a tax exemption for new daycare bills, but we still have several thousand kids on waitlists out there. Uh those are, so those that would be a municipal issue. I'm pretty happy with that, that we've got something done. Just running through the rest. It's a very business-oriented board council. So you it it might be interesting to look at the direction it takes after the strategic strategic plan is done because. This council that I'm on now was more focused on livability and and warm fuzzy stuff. Um these guys may be more focused on something else, so you might wanna look at that as well. And otherwise, um. If you come to a council meeting, I call it the show. They're not really interesting, but committee meetings is where the work gets done and they are public. Um they end, they are community services in particular. We get reports on crime. I chair that committee. Every report we've had on crime in the last year has shown crime is decreasing, but you can't convince people out there that it is. You know, this is an overall statistic. Some parts are going up, some parts are going down. And obviously, we're gonna have the homeless.
If we wanted to come to those meetings, how would we figure out when and where they're happening?
Kamloops.ca is the website and all committee meetings are on a calendar there. Um I believe they're all back at city hall. They, some of them were not. Um they're not. And they're not regular. Uh the system was set up for them to be quarterly, but I made my committee meet monthly because. Community services had so many issues to deal with. Um some of them meet monthly, some of them meet every two months, so you would just check regularly on it. Um and the agendas come out usually for committees a few days before the meeting as well, and they're also on that website. You know, that that website has loads of stuff. It was just redesigned into a new portal and there's all kinds of information. Neighborhood plans are there. There's loads of stories in the neighborhood plans. Um you know, transit plans, all kinds of really great stuff there that you can just. Access and look, go through, looking for story ideas. So, um but it will, I would not worry about it until the new year because the new mayor has to decide on. Committee chairs. He's gotta do that before Tuesday apparently. Um but it's doubtful that much will happen until the new year other than um learning curve. And then in the new year, we start with strategic planning, which is not open to the public. And but we do do budget. We start our budget then. That'll be fun. Whole bunch of newbies talking about budget. Uh and that's a public process as well. And we do public input on that as well. And um that this will be an interesting one because we had a pretty high tax rate last year and people were angry about it, even though they know everything costs more money. Um so I don't know, depending on where to go with that, that could be uh fraught with trouble as well. So that's how you find it. And if you can't find anything, text me or call me or I I mean, I'll help you. I don't mind. I mean, I I was with you guys. But I I, of course, I didn't have to cover city council because in my hometown, my dad was a counselor, so I never had to deal with it there. Um but, yeah, I'm I'm always here and I'm here for any of the students, Sean, if they need help with anything. Because it's not easy and it's really not easy when you're just starting out. My very first interview was a woman whose dog was shot in the foot and I froze. Because the little dog was there and it was so sad and I was eighteen years old and I froze and the photographer asked the questions. So I know it's hard. Yeah, I was totally close. Cute little dog. Never forgotten that. So we're pretty good. We got just a couple more minutes. But, yeah, Tanner.
Um do you still consider yourself optimistic about the future of Kamloops?
Yeah, of course I am.
How do you maintain that optimism?
I I'm crazy. Well, I I I absolutely love Kamloops. Um I I love the pe- the the people here. I'm from a huge city in Ontario. And when I go back to visit my kids, my grandkids, I just want out of there because it's so cold and so white and so rude and so fast. Uh where's, we have a diversity here. Um we fit here. Um and we seem. Not with Jenny the last three years. This is a really warm commu- community that 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 cares. And we're gonna get back to that caring again, um somehow, some way. Yeah, I know that. I just believe it, you know, because people, in the end, people just want everyone to be happy. And to prosper. And and we're gonna beat down this angry mob of of crazies and and. And who want to ship people home and call them awful words that I can't I can't even repeat, you know? We're gonna, that's gonna go, that's gonna go away. And and you guys are gonna help with this. All of your generation are gonna help with this, you know, because you care. And you gotta live here. And um my my middle son came back to visit years ago. He would have been eighteen at the time. And uh he had moved back to Ontario. He came back to visit. He went downtown for a walk and he came home and he said, does everybody say hello here? I said, yeah, that's what we do. Oh, well, it's a little annoying. You know, but that's what, that's what we do, you know. And yeah, so, you know, I I think I I love Kamloops. I even love Kamloops with angry people because at least they're out there expressing themselves and we know where they are, you know. Um so, yeah, it's it it it's a good town. It's a good town and it's it's a great town for um. For finding your place. I find, yeah.
Thanks for the pick me up.
Oh, I'll give you a pick me up anytime. I can also bring you down real fast if you wanna call too.
Now I'll go ahead and mute myself there now.
No, it's and you're at a good university. I even though I I I kind of mock it in a way, it it's gone the way of all universities. They're they're just businesses now. But um and and to go into journalism, quite frankly, I think that's just braver than hell because it's it is a challenging. A career. My son wants to be a social worker. I keep saying be an auto mechanic. They make more money per hour. You don't take your work home with you. Um journalists don't make a lot of money unless they like become talk talking heads. And they take their work home with them if they're real journalists and and um that's hard. And you've got to really be believe in your job and believe, you know, it's not a job. I I know people hate it when when we call it a calling, but it is a calling. You know, you you want, you want to make things better and you wanna share the truth. And uh that's a particularly hard thing to do right now because people don't like the truth. So I think that the fact that you guys are doing this is is absolutely amazing and and great and I'm pissed off with true for doing with most of the journalism program. Um but they're going the way of everybody else. And should you not wanna be a journalist, it's a really good calm skill set. I've got so many friends from journalism who now making big bucks working for the government. Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Cool. Anything? Anybody else got anything else before I say bye? Because I gotta go buy winter tires? Oh, well, this was fun. I'm serious. If you need anything, contact me. I'm easy to find. I can always help you. Um otherwise, um thanks for having me do this, Sean. This was interesting, fun.
Thanks so much, Dale. You know, uh you're you're lively and inspiring and informative and it's. It's been great for me just to sit here, listen to you talking to the students. Thanks again, Dale.
Oh, no, it was great. Thanks a lot. Have a great weekend when you get to it and I'll be I'll be watching for you, so take care. Bye.